Good morning. This is the April 21st Board Meeting of the Blue Earth County Border Commissioners. If we could stand and plug legions to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Bob, could you start us off with the agenda review?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there are no changes to the agenda this morning.
I'll move, oh. Commissioner People moves the agenda review.
Landcammer, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Jesse, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Yes.
Commissioner Purvis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Yes.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Yes. And then we get started off right away with Mr. Phil Klosen from Human Services. Good morning, Phil.
Morning, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I have just one action item for you this morning and then a couple of informational slides regarding child support and our housing programs. And then I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Hader, who's here to give us an update from public health regarding the COVID pandemic. The first action item is regarding the fee policy, and it really is updates and changes for this coming year. It shows our billing services, the amounts we charge in the document, and also a procedural guideline according to some of the rules we operate under. There is an attachment with the changes of, of the summary of the changes for this year, and I'm just going to give you a couple of examples off that list. I did give a copy of the fee policy, Mr. Chair, to Jesse if anybody wants to look at it. There is no signature line though, so you're free of signatures this month, which is good. Couple of-
Normally, you're the one that gives me the most signatures.
I know, I thought I'd even out the score a little bit. This, this attachment really shows these changes and a couple of examples of the intricacies that we deal with. But page one, you'll see at the kind of the end of that paragraph, it lists four of our acronyms for our programs and financial assistance, M5, DWP, MSA, and GA. But it says we'll not charge a fee for services, but may be, that we cannot charge a fee for services, but maybe charge a copay or deductible based on their public health insurance plan. We are not able to further subsidize the copay or deductible per the Department of Human Services. So what this means is MA sets a rate, and then what we can't do is discount that rate further. And there's rules around that for these four programs. And so when we talk about the complexity of how it applies, somebody might come in and apply for this program, but also be on other programs that has a different set of rules. But I, this is a tweak, a change that we have to make sure we're saying, so that we can't discount the MA rate, is really what the bottom line is. Is if they have a copay, they have to pay it. And so you're probably aware that we do have the ability sometime in a hardship, a lot of times with medical situations where we can waive certain fees if somebody's in a hardship situation. In this case, we can't even do that because there's, there's statute around that. And then page two and four, there's just language changes. I, I, you can certainly read those and look at those in the fee policy if you'd like. Page five, it says sliding fee will not be applied to co-insurance unless the plan meets Internal Revenue's definition of high deductible plan. Well, we've kind of went through this ourselves as a county having a high deductible plan, and there's different rules for different plans. And so in this case, they're saying that we can not really apply the sliding fee again unless it's a high deductible plan. So it's an exception. And you could ask me why it's an exception? I have no idea how these things get done, they get done, you know, either at the state or federal level. And then the last one, I'll just say too, page 16, it says if a client's open to financial assistance in Blue Earth County, billing clerk will contact Financial Assistance Case Aid for income verification. If eligible, a sliding fee will be applied. So what this is, this is indicating is just a standard of practice that we have, that a lot of times people will come in, they'll apply and not tell us where their income is, and they might actually qualify for the sliding fee, and we miss it. And then later on down the road, we look back, let's say there's a fee waiver request, and go, oh, they would have qualified for the sliding fee if we would have just known. So we're just kind of doing that internal step to check ourselves to see if they might be able to apply the sliding fee. So this is a lot of that complexity, and you kind of get the sense too, how it doesn't apply across the board. And that would be my only hope as the years go by when we talk about administrative simplification, that some of these rules, I think they all have rhymed to their reason. It's not that they don't make any sense, it's just that there's so many different rules for different programs. And if we could streamline some of that and find a common way to talk about how people do hit the sliding fee scale, or how we can do copays or deductibles, it would sure be nice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The copay or the deductible on page one, that could be significant, I would assume.
It could, and a lot of times people are on, when we talk about spend downs, that they have enough income that they don't qualify just outright. They're, they're not so low income that they can just, they can just qualify without any changes. So what they have is a copay, or a, what we call a ability for them to have to spend down their income to qualify. That's the kind of example, though, if I can walk you through that for a spend down, is you can see that the only reason they qualify is that they have to pay first a chunk of money. And you said it could be a lot of money. It actually can be a lot of money, but the great benefit is that they get into the MA service set. And so you see how we don't want to then double dip that because the only reason they qualify for MA is because they have the spend down. It's big, but it's like a deductible or a copay, that you have to get through that in order to get to the benefit set. If we then forgive that, then we've really reclassified the whole qualification process. So it, you really do have to work through it a lot because people, you know, come to us obviously and are in a hardship, and you want to be generous or benevolent, and you realize you can't compromise these rules because in a, in a sense, we're resetting the bar of where people qualify, and, and that wouldn't be, you know, fair to the next person that doesn't ask. And so we do hold some structure in place so we don't compromise the, the intent of how people qualify. But I do agree with you that a lot of times, you know, they have a thousand dollars that they have to somehow deal with, and they don't have a thousand dollars. And that's what we face, and so we do put them on payment plans, we can do that, and just not rechange the bar is all that we can do.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah.
I was concerned that people just wouldn't come, and it wasn't very neat.
Right. And you know, the other thing Commissioner and, and rest of Commissioners, Mr. Chair, is that we always try to work with people. Like, our goal isn't to try to not have them qualify, our goal is to try to figure out a way to have them qualify and get what they need.
Yep.
Actually, Mr. Chair, that is the action item I have for the Board's attention today.
Okay. Purvis moves approval.
Brunder will second.
Got a motion and a second. Jesse, could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Yes.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Yes. All right. So you've got informational stuff for us here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, some informational pieces. The first of those being child support. You've seen these graphics, I think, for a number of years now, and so we kind of track progress, and there is some history included in these graphs. I will talk through them fairly quickly because I do want to make sure I leave enough time here for Kelly to, to get into some dialogue with you all if you'd like. The first slide, you'll see the different bar graphs and, or line graphs. And the paternity establishment is something we focused a lot on working, both with our child support staff and Pat's office, through the courts to establish both paternity and order establishment, which is the next one. And we've always overperformed, or for a number of years, overperformed the state average in those areas, so we are very strong. The third graph, you'll see that we are under the state average, and that's been true for many years. You see us increasing year over year, which has been our goal, to increase our collections on current support. And so that's where a lot of our attention has gone. It's really hard to move the dial on those, depending on where people are at. A lot of times, there's a real entrenchment around what they're willing to pay, or if we can find them, or if we can't find them, to chase some of the money. But we've made a real concerted effort to increase that collections, and we want to try to get those, at least those two bars to meet. The fourth graph, it's kind of closed, and that's only, I think, because the collection on arrears, the old debt that people owe, we've focused more on trying to get up the current support than on arrears, not to say that's unimportant. But a lot of times, there's chronic arrears, meaning there's really no chance, if you look at the case, that we even don't know where the person is, or they're in jail, you know they're not going to pay. And so it's, it's really hard again to sometimes move that dial. The fifth graph is cost effectiveness, which we've always, always been extremely strong on. And, and one of the more important ones in my mind is the relative worth or return on investment of our staff and our performance in that regard. And then you'll see that there was kind of a V-shaped curve here in the opening of cases, and that the last couple of years have gone up. And so that's significant just regarding caseload, but you know, it's 60 cases, it looks like, in the last year. So it's, it's not insignificant, but it's not overwhelming us either at this juncture.
Do you expect that to go up now with COVID-19?
Yeah, and so this has been, this is one of those indicators that is affected by the economy. Obviously, all of our financial assistance is, but then child support as well, where people sometimes have a hard time paying their child support. So you see a direct impact of the economy on that, and vice versa. When the economy's been good, we've been able to try to capture more of the collection. So there's a direct link between those, those indicators, definitely. Let's, yes, please.
Just for clarification, these are cases that are for people who are in public assistance, is that correct?
It includes those, but it can be anybody, so they can come to us. There might be a fee that they have to pay or charges, but that we are open to all incomes in child support. So it depends on how they do that, if they can work it out themselves with the courts, or if they do need the county to be involved. And so we're involved in a, in the case as a full continuum of cases, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And let me see, then I'm going to move to housing, so a big jump to the next slide. And these, these are really dashboard slides. And the first one is about our supportive housing. So these are the more transient folks that are on the cusp of being homeless, maybe haven't been as homeless as long. And then the last group I'm going to talk about are the chronic, more chronic folks that have struggled with homelessness or risk of homelessness. The first graph shows the enrollment percentage by household type. And you'll see that we have 133 enrollees or participants right now, which represent 73 households in this program. And you'll see multi, multiple-person households, that's 29, and also with 49 children. And that's not on the slide, but Andrew told me that that includes 49 children involved in that. And then single-person households in this supportive housing program, 44. And the breakout is just in graphic form. The next slide gives you some idea, which I always think is kind of interesting, how kind of evenly spread out this one is. But it's the bar graph that shows the different areas of the reasons why people exit. And it's really almost evenly spread out in all the categories that they measure. I apologize for the slide that it cuts off, but this is actually a state-driven slide. We can't adjust that slide, and so Andrew, we put the titles up here in, in the dark, in the black letters at the top. And you'll see though, just in all these different reasons, from death to voluntarily left because of, you know, four or five different reasons, to just refused or just dropped out and we lost them. But it's like onesies, twosies here and there of the 18 that we have that exited, and for all different kinds of reasons. So it's interesting that they've captured those and that all of those indicators are represented at least by one person. The final slide then is a bit of a shift, so this is the long-term homeless. Single adults who have been homeless and struggled with this kind of chronically. And, and this is just a straightforward slide of, of what we've seen as far as movement within the program during 2019. Newly enrolled during that year were eight, closed four, total enrolled as of 1-1 of 19 was 14, and then at the end of the year, 18. And so these are, are those folks that we've actually struggled with COVID to sometimes stay connected with. It's difficult, a lot of them do not have media or a phone, and so it's harder to practice our safety issues with distancing and/or trying to use media in lieu of being face-to-face with anybody. And so that, that has been a population that we actually have had more difficulty as far as staying in touch with those folks. I think we've been able to contact them and be in contact with them, just not as intensely. It used to be more of a day-to-day connection between the worker and, and the person. So that's what I had, unless there's any questions for me, I'll, I'll turn it over to Kelly Hader.
I have one question.
Yep.
Can you just talk about the process as to how we work with the homeless? I mean, I'm assuming parental assistance to a certain extent?
Yes.
Partners?
Yes, absolutely, and it's all a continuum of care. And Andrew Peach, who is our supervisor, has been, you know, doing this for a long time. But you, you all know, you, Commissioner Landcammer, how many years we've been at this from the first pilot till now, and watched it evolve. And so Hearth has been a partner, and you see those contracts come through, which I, I just brought some through in the last month or two.
There are bills today.
Oh, there, yeah, there you go. And so, yeah, that's the reality of the contracts, right? The bills come then. But they've been a good partner to us, there's no doubt. I, I think I expressed to the Board that things have changed, and we probably haven't looked at the structure of how that all works for a while. And so I think I'm interested in saying, are we practicing smart? Are there any changes we have to, to, to make? One of the big changes that, that has happened is a centralized point of intake. So people can come in, it's really a lot of doors, but what it does is it's created one funnel. So all those folks, rather than a scattered, yes, it's a major accomplishment in the last, you know, five to 10 years that this has been worked on. And I still think there's work to do, but I think the centralized intake concept, because there's so many people involved in the continuum of care, from partners to ourselves to Hearth, that we have to make sure that people aren't slipping into cracks, or that one hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. So that's been a huge addition, and that's the best way to filter people in. If it's a housing need for Section 8, or if it's for us, they can sort that out. And there really is no wrong door, so if they call us, we also funnel them back to that same place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to add, Commissioner People, yeah, what you're saying, Phil, and that was a good question. And it's good to have that centralized approach, it really has helped a lot.
It really has.
Now, we just, yeah, it's a constant battle to find, there are housing and housing that would-
Well, I'll try to make a clean segue here to having Kelly come up, but you look at what this response has been to COVID, and we have been at the public health game for a number of years, and I think been very proactive. And I told Kelly personally, I'll say it publicly, is I'm very proud of her and her work that she's done with her team, setting a table for something that, you know, my wife laughs because they use unprecedented so often, you know? An unprecedented challenge that we have, and it is, there's no doubt that this is unprecedented. But what happens is you see some of the still cracks, or the scale and scope of saying, what if we have a surge? And how would we do that? And how would we accommodate this need? And all of a sudden, the ICU is full. I think housing felt a little scattered like that is where I was going, is that there was all kinds of things going on, but there wasn't a common way to do this. And I think our learnings, as time has gone on, I'm sure Kelly could expand on that, but, you know, is that we're going to get good at doing this at that highest level of scope too, where it, you know, shuts down our economy and what that means. And it's going to take us a long time to figure that out, but I hope, just like your commis, like your commut commissioner, that we'll be able to then be more educated about the next pandemic, even if it happens 100 years from now, which would be great, if it was a long, long time. But that we're prepared, because now we have some, some history, and we have some kind of institutional knowledge in how this stuff works. And, and I think housing felt a little scattered, it was kind of a new thing for a number of years. And, and now it's kind of taken this, this shape where we, I think, have a continuum in place. Public health doesn't feel different to me, and I think we're reeling and looking for cracks all the time, but Kelly's just worked extremely hard in trying to be proactive about that, so we are prepared no matter what comes next.
And, and obviously, we're talking long-term homelessness here?
Yes.
But, and everything goes to December 31st, 19?
Yes, yeah.
So everything from February and March and April is going to blow this thing out of proportion.
It's not on here, and I know it's one of, some of those emergent funds that they make available is people that are not housed. But what's been difficult for us in that arena is finding those individuals again. Because of the lack of a phone, we often would do this, really the street work of finding folks out on the street, if that's where they chose to be, or if they were struggling and happened to be out on the street, we have to go find them. That's been our practice. But I think, even though you're absolutely right that it blows it out of the water, it changes the whole way we look at that, that population, those people that are experiencing homelessness, I think we've lost some of those folks. And I think the ripple effect, as you kind of indicate, Commissioner, will be down the road, that, you know, later this summer and this fall, those folks will be showing up, I hope not in crisis, but I hope we can reengage them quickly, so that it's not a crisis.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Morning, Kelly.
Morning, Kelly.
Hey, Kelly.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. It was a great segue as you were talking about the long-term homelessness. That's certainly something that has benefited us in the work at the EOC, and I'll talk about that a little later. As you kind of, as Phil mentioned, we, we have been training for this for a long time. So some things are, were, have been expected in this response, and some things certainly have not been expected. But our work in TB and tuberculosis and investigations, and in H1N1 has really formed those deep partnerships in our community and helped us do a lot of work. And I'm just so thankful for all of our partners in Blue Earth County, in the community, this Board, and all of the folks that I work with. My public health team is, is one of the best you could have. So I'll start with a quick situation update in this rapidly changing situation, which is the other term that we use a lot. As of today, we have 24 lab-confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Blue Earth County. Our cases range in age from 15 to 74, with a median age of 40. Of the 24 lab-confirmed, 17 have been released from isolation or recovered. And that can change quickly. So one of the, the things I wanted to talk about is essential service provision. One of our mandates is local public health is to provide essential services, which is really ensuring people have food, water, access to medical care, housing, medications, access to mental health services, and anything else they need to live their day-to-day life. Currently, we are providing essential services to two households. Overall, we have provided essential services to five. Everything from one household needing just medication delivered, they couldn't go out and get their medication from the pharmacy, so we picked that up and dropped that at their door, to one person about a 7 o'clock at night call that needed housing, food, medication, the whole gamut of essential services. And we were able to coordinate that and provide that within a two-hour period of time. So by 9 o'clock, we had him a place to stay, and food, and some reading materials with the partnership of our library. And it was just an absolutely fantastic thing. The Department of Health was amazed at how quickly we were able to respond. We also have engaged in work with Horizon Homes and the old crisis center site to have additional housing for folks who may have some signs and symptoms of COVID-19, to have a place to go if they aren't able to do that isolation or quarantine at home. We've also, I've also been spending a lot of my day at the Emergency Operations Center at the EOC down at the city, which is kind of a unique structure. Again, we're an amazing region. The City of Mankato, law enforcement and EMS, and County Sheriff's Department and County Public Health are at the EOC every day. And we've been able to just find so many efficiencies and do so much amazing work together down there. We're able to create resource lists, and we don't each have to keep a resource list. So where are the masks or the gowns, or the hand sanitizer that is in short supply and now being sold by the bucket, rather than by, you know, sometimes a smaller bottle? We've created funding resources to be able to share with our partners. We collaborate on the personal protective equipment, or the PPE conversations that happen. So EMS, FIRE has expertise, as do my public health nurses. So it's been a great collaboration on sharing that knowledge with each other. We listen in on phone conferences together, as you can imagine, there are, there are a lot of those. Department of Health, Emergency Management, Center for Disease Control. So we are able to collaborate on information that we hear in those phone calls and get, and as people call into the EOC, we're able to get the right question to the right folks to get a, really efficiently answered community questions and resources. A few of the specific successes we've had over the last few weeks are, we've been able to support our non-emergency transportation providers such as AMV with PPE and infection control education, ensuring that there is still infrastructure to get to the doctor for a lot of our population. And then AMV will also be joining our cell central healthcare coalition call this Friday as a key partner, to keep them up to date on all of the efforts that are going on there, very integral to our plans. So that was a coordination of all of us down at the EOC. As you may have heard yesterday, there was a media briefing and a lot of press on the coordinating collection and distribution of PPE through the Mayo Event Center, getting the right personal protective equipment to the right folks at the right time. And that was a joint city and county media brief yesterday, and we are all providing our expertise on how that is rolling out. Amy Holst has been a key partner in helping us with that communication. So in, specifically, we were able to provide gowns. So one of the donations was gowns, and Open Door was in need of those. So yesterday, the gowns were delivered to Open Door, which was exciting. We also provided technical assistance to Open Door to continue to be able to access those supplies. We've coordinated outreach to congregant care shelters, nursing homes, group homes. Initially, all of our state agencies were asking us to reach out to these particular entities, so there would have been three or four of us calling, three or four different systems calling and asking very similar questions. And we've been able to coordinate that. We now have a Monday call that is attended by city staff, county staff, emergency operations folks to check in and see what they, see what their needs are, see what their support, what kind of support. what kind of support they need. Yesterday, we were able to supply each of the congregate shelters and congregate care settings with thermometers, which are in very short supply right now. If you go into a store, trying to find a thermometer is, maybe there's a couple now, but certainly a few weeks ago, there, there was none. And now they're able to, you know, check temperatures of either staff and/or residents or people staying at their shelters. Other, other things we've been involved with include the alternative care site planning, education and supply of personal protective equipment to other human service units who have a need to still see clients face-to-face at times. And we're looking ahead, exploring the communication needs as May 4th comes forward, and looking at a virtual media briefing. And I, it's into our South Central Healthcare Coalition is unique among coalitions in the state as well, where when you see us early on in this, we were up, we had a joint press conference, and it was MSU and South Central and District 77, Blue Earth County, and then Mayo and Mankato Clinic. That doesn't happen all over the state. We, you know, we look as a coalition, and we work as partners and do those media briefings together. So again, people get the, are able to ask the right questions to the right folks and get answers, so that's, again, so proud to live in this community. It's amazing. There's much, much more, but I will pause there for questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Brunder here. How many tests have been performed in Blue Earth County? Do we know what that number is?
I do not know how many tests are performed.
I'm just curious of the ratio.
Right. I can, I can find that out, though.
If you can, that'd be, that's an interesting number. And I always like to follow that number from the people that have removed out of isolation to the people we have, so we really only have seven active cases that we know of in Blue Earth County. And so if you compare it to the testing, would be a neat number to have.
Right. I can, I can find that out, and of course, when we talk about the numbers that are out there on the website, that's lab-confirmed. There's also clinically diagnosed cases, so that does, that number does not include clinically diagnosed cases. That's different.
Which explain that to me, that's, I know, I assume I know what it is, but just so I'm clear.
So lab-confirmed means they actually had the swab test and with the reagent, figured out that it absolutely is COVID-19, clinically diagnosed as based on symptoms.
Okay.
So do you have a fever or a cough?
So the numbers that we're seeing, the state numbers and stuff, those are all lab-confirmed?
Those, the ones coming out of the Department of Health are lab-confirmed numbers. There are other numbers out there about what they're estimating or what their projections are with the number of people who are sick. So it depends on which set of statistics you're looking at, and they usually clearly define lab-confirmed and other.
Do you, do you feel that we'd have more lab-confirmed tests if testing was more readily available in the, in the area?
Do, do I think that there would be more lab-confirmed cases? Yes. Yep. And how, you know, when we think about COVID-19 or having that illness, there can be a range of illness. So some people have had milder symptoms, some people have had very severe symptoms and been on ventilators for weeks. So very much like, you know, flu can have the same effect, where some people have a mild case of influenza, and some people have a very severe case on influenza, and these respirators for that as, as well.
Interesting.
This is just a comment, Mr. Chair, but I, I think that you talking about the relationships that you all have and working together makes such a difference. So thank you for continuing to build those. You've had them all along, but they're stronger now, I would assume.
They are. Those, a lot of us were around during H1N1, and those partnerships, those relationships that we've been working on since then and before then are absolutely key in just knowing, yeah, working together and making.
And just, just a comment, I've noticed online that Walmart was now going to be requiring everyone coming into their store to be wearing a mask.
I saw that as well.
And I'm not sure if, if the state or the county or the city or whatever has that power, but is there any way that we could require other realtors, or, you know, grocery stores, Menards, different places that, that do, to require them to, to have people wear masks?
We could certainly look into that in the statutes and the Community Health Board powers and.
I, I would appreciate that. I personally, when I walk into a grocery store or I walk into a hardware store, I have my mask. Got it right here.
Got mine here, too.
And, and I wear my gloves, but I'm surrounded by people that really don't believe this is happening. They, they do not appear that they, you know, they care. And personally, I have family members that have heart issues, and I, if it's not for my own health, I'm concerned about their health, and I don't want to bring anything back. But I, you know, and, and wearing a mask, like it's been shown, is that you don't know if you are carrying the, the virus yourself, even if you're perfectly healthy.
Right. Yeah, the virus can be shed.
And so, I mean, I've had people, I asked them, says, well, where's your mask? It said, well, I'm not sick. So I, I would, I would really appreciate you looking into that. That's, that is certainly one concern that I have when I go out and about. Until, until we get something, figure it out with some sort of a vaccine or something that are, we are absolutely not going to have it, but as we consistently see one outbreak after another going on, Worthington Sioux Falls down in Iowa, we, you know, there's, there's now a big outbreak up in North Dakota, and, and until we see something happening, it should be nice if other people would be responsible enough to, to wear the mask.
Mr. Chair, just a question. I know that the Mankato Clinic had a drive-through. I don't know if they're still doing that or not, and I'm assuming, and I know the doc, you know, the clinic and Mayo have done a lot of work internally, so I just wondered if they still have the drive-through clinic, or if they're all doing tests internally in the offices.
That's a good question. I don't know for sure. I know both clinics, each system has a clinic designated as a respiratory care clinic. Upper North Mankato Clinic is the Upper North Mankato location in East Ridge. I don't know if they're doing the drive-through model at this point.
And I think one of the challenges is there are tests or react, the agent that you need for it. I was just kind of curious, because I hadn't heard much about it lately.
Right, and the weather is better, so that certainly is an option as now, and, and that's certainly something that, you know, we've looked at is public health, too, how a drive-through model of, you know, if there was ever a chance to, they've talked about the mass, you know, swabbing many, many, many people, so we've actually started looking at what would a mass swabbing event look like versus a mass vaccination event? Because right now, we don't have vaccine or any time on the horizon, but there is discussion on that, so how would that work?
We go back to meningitis, because we did the community.
Yes, right.
Yeah, with vaccinations, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me today. Have a good.
I have a question. Is, is there anything we can do to make things easier? Or help, how can we be helpful? And maybe you can answer that, I'm just.
Let me think on that.
Yeah.
I know we had discussed at one point for essential services kits, having a note from the board in there, just as a personal touch to those who are being quarantined or isolated. I know each of the times we've dressed up off as a public health, we have included a handwritten note just wishing the person well, so that may be, but I can think about other things as well.
That's an easy one. Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate just coming back up for one more minute. I want to ask a question, I think Kelly can just answer it from where she is, but the question about testing, which I think is a big one, is, is there a problem with access to testing? So if I needed to test today, could I get one?
Good question.
So the last, we are, also part of our responses included sending out health alerts, which we call HANS, and the HAN defines who can be tested, because testing supplies are in short supply, whether it's the actual swab or the reagent or one of the components of that test. So right now, ill healthcare workers, people in congregate care, there are priority populations that we want to test to see if it for sure, to confirm or not if it's COVID. Certainly, if we have someone in a congregate care setting, we want to know for sure either way. That answer would be.
I think Commissioner Malcolm has said that time and time again, and I really appreciate your comments and, and hers about there are priorities for what, because we have limited testing. I think we are extremely fortunate to have her as our Commissioner again.
She's been amazing.
She is amazing.
And then just the last one, Commissioner, and I will shut this down, but I appreciate the dialogue and the support we get from all of you, and staff feel it as well. I wanted to go back, if I could, just to Commissioner Brunder's talking about how things kind of titrate through, but, you know, there's obviously folks in the community that are asymptomatic that have been exposed, but they don't know it.
Yep.
So that's the biggest category when we, and the reason I, I want to share this to see if we can all agree, like, this is how we kind of look at the different pieces, because as we hope for, rather than a surge, but a, a re-engagement of how do we get back into business, so to speak, I think we need to be aware of these risks, because they all present a little differently. So the asymptomatic folks that have been exposed is the biggest group, like using kind of that, that piece that you defined, Commissioner. The next one would be that they have been exposed to the virus and have a virus, but it's undiagnosed. And so they're sick, but they don't even know they're sick or they're ignoring it. Some about your mask question is, so, so you could be asymptomatic and exposed, you could be exposed and have the disease and not really know that you're that sick, because your body isn't exposed, there's different levels of exposure, and you are able to fight it off, but then you can infect so many other people, to Commissioner's point. The third category is this clinical doc or self-diagnosing, I am sick, I'm staying home, but it has not been lab-confirmed. So that's the third category. So asymptomatic, then presence of virus, then this clinical status that, that there's something going on, you can see the symptoms, but it hasn't been confirmed by a test. And then finally, the fourth category, which is MDH as our core metric. So these are all our analytics, but our core metric is we standardize how we measure things, and MDH is going to be that final standard of saying, this is how we're going to bona fide how much we're looking at, but it's a much more stringent thing, it's lab-confirmed test. So I just wanted us to say, if we have language for that, Kelly educates me about these different things and what fits in each category all the time, daily. And I just want to make sure I'm passing that along, so as we sort, we don't confuse what we're talking about, the risk, the big risk, the titrated risk down to level three or the lab-confirmed risk. There's no doubt statistically, what we were taught in school is that you can take, once you have a standardized metric, you can extrapolate the math from that to the population. There's no doubt about that, that works, and that's Fauci and all these folks, that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
But there's this other reality that, that Commissioner Brunder was talking about, that, and the masks, wearing masks, that's about this other reality that we have to acknowledge as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Can I ask one more question, which is totally off the subject? How, how's the teleworking going?
Oh, I, I think it's going very well. We're very well represented. I think Angie did push out some information to Josh yesterday that's, that's published, but I think we're at 75 or 80% of folks at least are partially deployed to telework, so, I mean.
Wow.
The building is pretty empty when you go there, and I think that's good news. That was, you know, this kind of respect for what we're up against, and people aren't, aren't congregating, they're just not. And so it's very successful in that way. We've had some, you know, expected glitches with IT, and IT has been extremely responsive, where financial workers, you know how you get dependent on things? We, we came from a place where we didn't have computers in my lifetime, to having a screen, to them needing, and I'm saying needing, two screens. And so we, we went from saying, no, you just get one screen at home, and it didn't work. And so we had to upgrade that and get them two screens at home, and now it's going well. So, you know, we've lived and learned, Commissioner, is what I would say about teleworking, and Bob and I have talked, I, I don't think we'll ever fully go back, you know, because you prove what really works well. The clinic was a little tough, getting some of the prescribers who maybe didn't feel comfortable on the phone, or maybe weren't as versed as like a Dr. Farnsworth might be with, with some of the telehealth, but they've been pushed into that reality. And so I think it's really a good thing, but it hasn't been painless. And Bob and I were talking before the meeting, is that it takes its toll over time, you know, we're not feeling like we're in a normal rhythm, and so that stuff is creeping in, but the telehealth, to your question, I think is, is really going well, and we've been highly successful at that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work.
Yeah. Tell your staff, too, how much it's appreciated.
All right. We're going to go back to administrative services. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for April 7.
I'll move approval of the County Board Minutes. This is Landkammer.
Peepo second.
Got a motion and a second. Jesse, could you call a rule?
Commissioner Peepo?
Yes.
Commissioner Purvis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Landkammer?
Yes.
Chair Stuber?
Yes.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Purvis moves the bills.
Brunder seconds.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any discussion on, on the bills? Any discussion on the bills? Jesse, could you call a rule?
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Landkammer?
Yes.
Chair Stuber?
Yes. All right. We'll go right into Human Resources. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number four in your pack. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one act, action item for the board today, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a program coordinator in our disease prevention and control area. As you just heard from Ms. Hayder, our D, Disease Prevention and Control Area is a very active area currently. As a part of the COVID response, we have received $95,000 from the State of Minnesota to support our efforts, and so this position would be actually a promotional opportunity for one of our current disease prevention and control staff with a backfill behind that to, to follow. Part of the reasoning we're bringing this forward is, as you've heard, Kelly has been very active in the work of the disease management. She also has roughly 25 other staff that she oversees, and so we need to get her back into a supervisory role. We also have the issue of our tuberculosis monitoring that we have been doing. You've heard from staff in the past about the workload there, and so having COVID come on top of the workload that already was kind of at capacity is requiring this request to come forward to provide some additional support and resources in that unit.
Landkammer moves the action item.
Peepo seconds.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just think this one's critical. It, it just shows how important we, that we have to put resources into public health right now. This is, you know, something that we certainly didn't expect, and I think personally, they really were busy with the TB section, and now you add this on top, I think it's something we absolutely have to do.
It is a specialized area, so, you know, and when you think about, could you just move another staff person from another area? The nursing component here is a critical element, and we do not have that capacity in health.
Do you foresee this continuing even after the COVID-19 is done?
I think we need to evaluate that, and so the backfill, there is some question whether we'll do that as a permanent position or a temporary position. The Human Service Department, quite frankly, has been promoting this sort of request for some time, so just with tuberculosis and some of the other responsibilities in this particular area, the ongoing need may very well be there, but I think we need a little more time to figure out where things are at and how the virus is going to continue to impact us.
So if we pass this, would we put it out as a temporary position?
This particular position will be an internal promotional opportu-, opportunity, so this one would not be temporary, this would be a permanent role. It would be the backfill that we would think about that.
Okay. So we do have employees that could be looked at for this?
For this particular role, yes.
All right. It's the backfill that we may not.
Right. That still would have a nursing component to it, and so that's why it would be kind of a specialized recruitment, but that would be the area where we'd evaluate whether it should be a permanent or temporary recruitment.
All right. Thank you.
I think, I've had numerous calls with NACO about legislation that is moving in Congress. As I understand it, any funding for state and local governments is probably not going to make it in this next alliteration, but it shows how local governments are the frontlines, counties are the frontlines. And I think, I don't know if Congress actually gets that, because we are the ones doing the work, and this is where the resources are being expended. So I find it interesting.
Somebody like to give a motion?
I'll move. I did.
Yeah, we did.
We did. That's right. Any more discussion? Jesse, could you call Raul, please?
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Land Cammer?
Aye.
Chair Steenber?
Yes. And then we have informational?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have filled a 911 dispatcher position, and we did receive then a resignation of a financial assistance specialist. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We have a change in employment status for a probation officer, switching from a temporary to a permanent position. And then we've initiated recruitment for a mapping specialist.
All right.
Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
That's all you have. Well, then we will go right into our Commissioner reports. Commissioner Land Cammer, you want to start us off?
Sure. I would love to. Actually, I seem to spend most of my time on conference calls lately. That's, seems to be the only way we're all communicating. So on the 7th, I had Region 9 orientation. Since you've been kind enough to give that to me this year, so they-
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you. They orientated me as to what's going on. On the 9th, conference calls with AMC as to what's going on, Senator Klobuchar worked on the aging population, and I also had a long conversation with Mike Leaven about what's going on with their housing and some of those things on the 9th. On the 10th, I sit on the Region 9 Transportation Advisory Committee. We had a Zoom meeting. All of these practically were Zoom meetings that were, and we approved MINDOT's transportation plan. Region 9 has various things that they have to do in that transportation for MINDOT. A lot of it is convening and working with people. On the 13th, I was on a Zoom meeting when the EDA at the city of Mankato made their decision as to who is going to do the project down by Cub and the Children's Museum, that project. They decided to go with Cohen Estry, who had applied three years ago, but their, their project was much, much better and much more, much more engaged this time. So that's who's going to be doing the building down there. It'll be interesting to see what happens with housing, with the COVID-19, you know, is there going to be money from Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, all those things. It's a national group, so they probably have some resources that other agencies might not have. On the 14th, he's not here right now, but MSU did their civil engineering design presentations, where they do two projects every year, and our engineer, Ryan, helps with those students at MSU. Three hours, interesting as all get out. They do different projects, and this was, one was downtown Mankato, doing bridges that open things up for people and got them across various roads. It's always interesting to listen to. On the 15th, I was on a conference call for inclusive recovery with local governments, and then a White House briefing later in the day. On the 18th, which is a Saturday night, of course, we find out from NACO that 3.5 is coming up, and we need to contact our senators and our congressmen. I did the two senators, and I know Mark did the congressman. So we all worked hard. Maybe not successful, but had lots of conference calls and texting and information. Yesterday, I had a Southern Minnesota Housing Partnership meeting, where we talked about kind of some of the proposals for the area that the Nuns own up at Good Council. So some interesting things going on there, and the Nuns want to make it a community project, and so they're sending out information to anybody who's ever gone to school there, I'm one, and also to the neighborhood, to see what the neighborhood would like to see happen there. And then a NACO update later in the day as to where we're sitting. Right now, it looks like the legislation's got money for businesses, small businesses, and hospitals, which is so needed, and then testing. So those are good projects. So we'll see what happens, if they pass it. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Mark?
Let's see. Well, let's see. Kip and I did on the 8th, had our MICA meeting, Zoom meeting, and seemed like it was quite well attended by phone or computer. And the big thing was, everybody was, they were talking about abatement, what we would do. There was a far-ranging subject, I guess, how it went. Nothing conclusive. And Friday, the 17th, actually had All Seasons Arena, we had our meeting, and that was Zoom, too, and that dealt with the rink and with various issues with the school district and such. And that was productive, I guess. And then, as Clean said this weekend, yeah, did engage the congressman several times, actually, Hagadore. And it's funny, it's funny, but this day and age, they seem to, you have to negotiate, and then you come up with this package, and if you're just a congressman or a senator that's not involved with the nego, it's kind of like, you take it or leave it, and you see too much of that. It's not deliberative like it used to be. I guess it's been a few years, but it's, don't like that, but, because, so you get them where they think, "Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but we have to look at the whole, you know, what are they going to come up with?" And then, and then you get to some of that partisanship, too, like, you know, so it's, yeah. And like Clean, Commissioner Land Cammer said, that, you know, the, yeah, it didn't become part of it for the states or for the counties, issues colonies and the local governments, where, yeah, this is the, somebody used the word boots on the ground, whatever, but that's where it is, yeah.
Yeah. The negotiation is all being done by-
Just the high level, yeah.
Yeah, two people from the House and two people from the Senate and the White House, and that's pretty much where it's going.
Yep. And like, so the congressman would have a hearing, or have a conference call, like, it was Sunday, you know, and from the minority leader, and of course, I'm sure the other, do it from the majority, whatever, and, yeah. Anyway, we'll see. I guess, that's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner Purvis?
Okay. Still getting used to doing business with on the phone and by email and stuff. I've been in contact with the executive director of Detox. We stay in contact on a regular basis, and so far, they're doing very well. They haven't had any COVID cases, and it's kind of business as usual. They're busy, which is not a surprise. They did lose one full-time employee, and they're looking to replace that employee, but other than that, Detox is running fairly good. Emails and phone calls with the extension office, they're working on choosing the Farm Family of the Year for Blue Earth County, so kind of excited for that, but we don't know whether there's going to be Farm Fest, county fairs, or anything like that. So stay tuned as that develops. On the 16th, I had a webinar with AMC, Public Safety. We had briefings from the Commissioner of Corrections. He gave an update on the COVID-19 in the prisons, and they do have cases, but it sounds like they're managing. Had a briefing from the Joe Kelly, the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and he detailed what's going on with those folks. Had an update for jails and law enforcement from Bill Hutton from the Minnesota Sheriff's Association. It sounds like they're doing quite well. Things are working well in the jails, that type of thing. And then we heard from the probation officers, how they're handling that, Jason Anderson from ITASC of probation, and Midge Christensen from Director of Community Corrections. So a lot of stuff going on. It was good to, good to have those updates, and we'll continue to do business this way.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Brunder?
After the last board meeting, Commissioner Peepo mentioned already that we had our MICA meeting, and yes, a lot of discussion about property tax, deferrals. It was all over the place, from not doing anything to waiting until after the taxes are due and doing something. Just a lot of discussion. It was probably most of the meeting, but had a good, good update from the rest of the staff also. Then I had my SWCD meeting, which was a call-in, and they're just doing business as usual with the rest of us. The conference call, there were some technical difficulties on some of it, but they got it all in pretty good, and I gave our report as far as what we had going on here. And we had a lot of discussion about how are we going to start handing in public hearings.
Yeah.
Because at some point, we got to figure something out here. We got ditch stuff out there, we got planning and zoning stuff out there, you know, and they had some interest in those. And so we are working on that, and so there was a lot of discussion with, when I gave my report on that specific item. Then we had a MRCI call-in also. Lot of things going on at MRCI. Unfortunately, this is not going to be a business as usual, even when this is over. It will take months to get this up and running. From what I understand, the billings are billed a month behind, so even if we get up and running for a month, it's still going to take months to get in. We did get some federal help from the PPP loan, from what I understand, was $3.5 million, I believe. But again, that doesn't go very far in an operation like that to keep us up and running. So Brian and his leadership team are really working with some different organizational structure, how they're going to deal with things long-term, not just as short-term, but how are we going to get it back up and running, and what's going to happen after it's up and running again. So a lot of things going on there. And at the end of the day, it's just an organization we have to have in these communities. These, the services MRCI provides is very valuable, and so we need to get it back up to 100%. And that is Brian's goal at the end of the day. How we get there is, might look different than what we have now, but that is his goal, and he is committed to that. I had MVAC meeting last night, a conference call. I went into the office with social distancing and made the call from there, because I had to sign the documents for the grants. Lot of head start stuff. There's a lot of head start grant coming, money coming in for some COVID stuff. Obviously, they're changing up the platform a little bit, trying to get some summer, summer programs going, but unfortunately, our staff has to spend all this time putting this together, and then we might not even have it come summer. So a lot of work for the staff, but at the end of the day, it's something we need to do, because these kids are going to be out of, you know, listen, a couple months of school now, so they could make that up come summer, and if we can get a grant to pay for it. But a lot of logistics, trying to get a grant like that together, from what they told us yesterday was, it's not as simple as just saying, "We're going to have a summer reading program." We have to figure out how many people can come, how many want to come, how are we going to get them there? I mean, totally different program. So Chris and her staff are working diligently, trying to get something put together. We did not approve that grant last night, because we just don't know what the numbers are yet, but as soon as we get them, we'll approve that, and we're very supportive of that operation moving forward, obviously, as the, as the board. And then I've had several miscellaneous ditch calls. Water is still running, the pipes and sewer, or the lines are still breaking in the ditches, and with the fall, or the snow melt, they're starting to get exposed. So I've had several calls, and Ryan has been very active about trying to deal with those for me. So that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
You can ask.
And I don't think anybody can answer it. Can we do digital signatures? When you talked about going into the office, I just think it's a question that we might want to think about, for what that's worth. I used to do digital signatures all the time at USDA.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think that is an option in certain places. I think it is a question probably better directed towards our federal and state partners, because we're usually the ones sending stuff in, requesting either reimbursements or grants or whatever. And so it's their rules that really drive that, but certainly, in some cases, the state has gone to an electronic system entirely for some of our grants, so it is a signature-free sort of system in some cases, but it really depends on the different programs involved.
It's just a different way of doing business.
Absolutely.
And I think it might be worth looking into at least, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Well, my report itself is rather short. As, as most of us, we have our meetings that were canceled or put to Zoom, or I had a few that went to Google Meet, which is, which was another download that I had to put on there. I think my iPad is getting filled up with different meeting solutions that we use. I've had almost daily, if not two, three times a day, calls to the administration in reference to the COVID-19 issues, and what's going on in the county, and what's going on in the state, and how it's affecting the county. So I appreciate Bob either answering my calls and getting me the answers as much as he can, or else, or calling me back and letting me know what's going on. It's been very good to have that close relationship. April 14th, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund meeting to approve programs. I'm sure Will remembers those well. We met on Google Meet. How's the flow of grant dollars for that? Is that holding steady? So far, I think some of it is coming from what happened before this all happened. So I can only imagine what's going to happen- Sure. -in the future. On the 15th, I had a Rural Action Caucus call-in. Of course, again, COVID-19 is the big issue, and what's going on in the rural counties like ours. On the 16th, I had a TDS board meeting on Google Meet, and actually, we had 18 people on there. So it was a pretty big meeting, right on, you know, on Google. Yesterday, I had a magic meeting on, again, I'm not sure if it was on Google or what it was on. I log in, it gives me there. So, and I don't think I have to tell everybody here what's happening with, you know, stocks and bonds across the United States. It's not a pretty thing. I've had a lot of people talk to me about how their retirement fund has gone down. I said, "Just hold on, you know, if you can." And then again, yesterday, I had another talk with Bob on the meeting agenda. So that's, that was basically mine. I would thank everybody for watching this morning. And if you wish to tune in to the work session, it will not be on live stream, but will be on, you can listen in using your phone, and you can get that number by going to the Blue Earth County website and looking at- and looking at the 21st work session packet. And the phone number's on the bottom, along with the access code. So thank you very much. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, people. So moved.
Purvis, seconds?
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, oh, I can just say, for all of us, we're on live stream. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, we're adjourned.